Well, Tim is on, we have quorum, so thank you for everybody for your time and patience. Maureen, I'm gonna ask that you assist by just keeping us on the agenda. And so, uh, thank you, everybody, and without objection, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the REO for today. I believe the first agenda item is generally.
Seven minutes.
Yeah.
I second that.
And motion has been made in seconds. Are there any questions related to the minutes?
Um, uh, no, I'm sorry, never mind.
Yep. Favorably say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, second item, Maureen.
It'd be the review of the workforce report for DeBarry Homer Elementary School.
Shay, uh, would you like to take, start us off?
Sure. So, so, um, obviously, uh, you guys can see the numbers were at thirty-five point seven percent minority, uh, five point five percent women, six point seven five percent vet and twenty-one point two percent residents. Obviously, um, we're looking to raise the, uh, women and residents, uh, categories. We've been working with, um, a few, uh, subs trying to, uh, help them, uh, get their numbers up. Uh, Griseshi, um, is one of them. They added, uh, a woman uh, to the job and a Springfield resident. We had, um, Adams add two women, although one left. Um, so they're still hanging on the one, um, in Springfield resident. Um, one, we're looking to, a couple more, we're looking to bring in. Capasso, we're looking to bring in. We haven't caught up with them yet, but we're looking to, uh, nail them down. Uh, Wayne Griffin said they were going to do better as far as the residency numbers, so we're looking to have a conversation with them as well. So we're looking, uh, at the, uh, targeting, obviously, the, uh, subs that, uh, need to bring their women goals up um, in residence and kind of, uh, right now, as, uh, most people uh, know, um, that, uh, have been around, uh, Springfield right now, um, as far as the, uh, construction uh, trades, it's, um, it's not only Springfield either. It's tough to get residents, um, right now. Uh, we've been trying hard. We've been hitting other, uh, organizations to see, um, if there's, um, uh, any residents that we can bring on to the job. Uh, I've been talking to other, um, uh, compliance officers, particularly, um, Ethan Brown in the city of Worcester. And they're having a tough time in the city of Worcester as well as far as their residency uh, requirement. And Worcester, uh, actually doesn't just have, uh, Worcester proper for their residency. They can utilize other towns that actually touch Worcester for their residency requirement, and they still can't meet their residency requirement. So, um, it's a, it's a tough hole right now, but we're trying to do what we can, um, to, uh, meet the goals and get residents on the projects and women. Um, but that's, uh, essentially what we've been up to for the past month, uh, as far as, uh, Swan de Berry. I don't know if Frank wants to chime in, if he has anything, um, anything.
Yeah, no, I do that. Yeah, everything, uh, Shay said is very accurate. Um, all, I feel that Fontana and all of our subcontractors have taken this seriously. Um, I know we certainly have. Uh, I know Liz works hard. Uh, if somebody starts to slip or the numbers start to look like we're not going in the right direction, she quickly gets a meeting with myself, Shay, uh, the subcontractors, and we try to, to bring them in and, and see what they're doing to be proactive. It seems, it just, the hardest numbers are the resident numbers. The other ones are achievable, the the, the residents are what I think we globally struggle with. Um, not due to lack of effort, just the lack of people there that, that can do this work. It's kind of where we're at.
Um, hey, so, quick question on that. Uh, am I on mute? Shit, no.
No.
You're good. So, so two different things. Um, and again, I guess, you know, we could wait till the end of the job and try to figure out, you know, what went wrong, what could we do different, blah, 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 blah. My only point is, I, 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 I have not looked over this list in reference to saying, geez, well, where are, uh, these contractors, contractors coming from? Um, for instance, when we did the big Y, we had a New York-based general contractor, uh, excuse me, New Hampshire-based, which brought in his New Hampshire, uh, contractor. So, that is somewhat of a setup for failure. So, I, again, I don't know if these guys are from out of state, from eastern, you know, if they're, again, you're, there's no way anybody here is gonna be strictly Western Mass. I'm not that naive, but I guess, you know, do we start trying to look at as part of the statistical number later, you know, could that have made a difference? If the guy, and I'm not saying it can, I'm just, I'm just trying to throw out, that was just popped in my brain, you know, where are these contractors from? I don't know, you know? Just, yeah, we don't have to have a discussion about it. I'm just putting out there for food for thought. Thanks.
Tim, did you want to comment? You wanna pull your phone down a little bit?
Yes. Sorry, sorry. Um, yeah, this issue comes up at many, uh, city council meetings, employment and the economics of people living in the city of Springfield. It came up in an offhand way last night, at the, the meeting last night. So, I'm wondering if, you know, Frank, I think you made a pitch about all the things you do at a meeting or two ago to keep local people or residents, and you just referred to what you're doing with, uh, um, you know, Shay and stuff to, to deal with it. Um, I wonder if there's just another tack we should be taking besides that, which is going to, should we have the regional employment board come to one of these meetings? Should we have Keyshawn Dodds and people who run community centers or, um, come to these meetings? Uh, you know, is there another group of people who represent people in Springfield who have access to people in Springfield who need jobs? And are clearly not, because, well, you know, we're trying hard, we're trying good things, but I think there's, you know, this is what Dave Cruz's organization does, I believe.
So, can I just answer your question real quick? So, um, we have, uh, contacted Mass Hire with all the subs. Um, so, we have the subs, uh, contact Mass Hire, we have the subs contact the local neighborhood councils, and we have the subs contact the local community centers. So, the community centers, the neighborhood council, and Mass Hire have been contacted, uh, for, uh, not just this project, a multitude of projects.
And what response you get, we see the, the, and that's great. I'm, I'm glad to hear that, that that connection's made. It just, i- is there minor victories that we're not hearing about? Because the major victory of getting the numbers where we want, we're not succeeding at that. And, uh, do you feel like?
I, I, I don't feel like we're even getting, uh, minor victories, actually. Um, I've, uh, uh, again, I've, I've monitored these, make sure that these documents were sent out. I have, they send me copies from the neighborhood councils, from Mass Hire, from, uh, the community centers, and I don't know if it's just the trades that, uh, that's not getting, uh, traction. I, I don't know if the, uh, uh, constituents or the membership are going into other areas. Uh, I, I have no, I, I have no idea, but I'm in contact with Kevin from, uh, uh, Mass Hire. We're in touch with the community centers and the, uh, neighborhood council. So, as far as the community groups are, have gone, um, we've done our due diligence, um, and it's not yielded much results at all.
Yeah. If, could I just interject? Uh, I'm sorry, no, I'm not a committee member. Um, I would just say that I think there's more that we could do within the schools and outreach through the different high schools. I mean, of the union trades apprenticeship programs, we do outreach through Putnam, but given that Putnam has the waiting list, there's often young people who might be interested in the work from the other schools. Um, and so I've talked with, um, counselor, um, Letterman recently about perhaps putting together a bigger kind of career fair that includes community groups, but also is connected with people from Springfield Public Schools on it.
Please, to jump, anybody who wants to jump in.
Yeah, I mean, and that's a, that's a great idea. It's just gonna take, it sounds like, I mean, Shay, I didn't know we were doing those things. Those are good things. So, the great thing, good news of that is that we're doing those things. The crummy knows is that it's not producing the outcomes we want. And, I mean, twenty percent residents, and our goal, I think, is thirty or thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And, and to be, uh, uh, completely transparent, um, we, we, uh, try to meet the goals as best as possible. Um, but even other, uh, uh, compliance, uh, officers and, um, Maggie from Umba, um, has said that thirty-five percent is going to be a tough number, uh, to grab for, uh, any community, not just ours. Um, so, we're gonna keep trying our best, obviously, um, as far as that's concerned. And we have, uh, looked at community groups and, uh, Lisa's, uh, suggestion is awesome. We, that's one of our next four ways, not even on this, uh, uh, track, but on another track that we're trying to do some innovative things through compliance to get to the trade schools and try to figure out a pipeline uh, as far as that's concerned. And that's going to be talked about later on in the future because it's something that we're working on. Uh, but this is indicative of the country right now, not just, uh, Springfield, Massachusetts.
So, when you say, I assume you meant trends in the country.
Correct.
And, you know, at, at the same time, we're all gonna watch the news tonight and hear about inflation uh, going crazy, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, these are potentially good paying jobs, which would address some inflation gap.
Great paying jobs.
Yeah, um, I don't know. I, I appreciate what you said, and I support what you're doing. I, I just wonder if we should invite those people to our meeting, um, rather than just working through you and your, your networking. Why don't we, in September or something, invite Dave Cruz, invite Danny Warwick, or, you know, whoever his appropriate person is, et cetera, who does career placement stuff. It used to be Pat Bradley back in the day. She had a, a role in that. Um, I don't know, I'm not connected into the school department like I was. I don't know who does that stuff, but, um, it, it, I, I think there's other things we can do to still go after that. And, and I will mention it to Tracy and to Justin, who are uh, often the voice of making sure that we're taking care of Springfield's residents, uh, in the things.
A certain segment of Springfield residents.
Right, certain segment, well, um, so, um, at any rate, um, that, those are my thoughts.
Eloy, do you want to jump in there?
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, thirty-five percent is, is a, uh, ambitious number, a percentage. Uh, I've always, even thirty percent that I'm used to, uh, was a challenge at times. But I think it's something that, you know, we, we, something that we should keep pushing for. Uh, also, Shay, I thought you, did you mention that some group was going to have a job fear in one of our, in one of our meetings?
No, um, they, I, they were just mentioning it right now. Uh, I, I, no, not me, no.
That, that's a, that's a, that's a good option, if we can get a, uh, maybe even the different organizations uh, banding together and holding a job fair, uh, and, and that's good for them to work together, even though they may be competing. But, uh, that, that might be one option.
Fiore?
Uh, yeah, so a couple quick different things. Um, school system is broke. Uh, I had to literally drive around guidance counselors because they had no clue that the building trades were out there. So, that's what I experienced around MGM. Can remember, we did a massive input around MGM for getting, uh, women, minorities, veterans, and residents into our programs. The problem is, as soon as the work dries up, uh, those, uh, your members will, will disperse uh, back into where they came from because there's no work to constantly keep them busy. Uh, they just might not have the cars. There, there's multitude of reasons why they drop out. So, also, I can educate you that I just came back from Chicago, uh, and there was some statistical numbers thrown up, uh, by international, and in New England, I can't speak, maybe Lisa might have heard anything similar, we are going to need twenty thousand ironworkers over the next five years to man the construction boom coming towards us. So, yeah, this is not gonna get any better. Um, but I also want to be clear that, at the end of the day, these statistics uh, ultimately only lie on the general contractor. So, and don't get, don't misunderstand everyone about this, eh? Um, at one point, we had each contractor being held liable. Now, we have shifted to the GC to make sure that their contractors are doing it. Uh, at the end of the day, though, um, what is the, what gets done to a contractor that, again, I don't want to use the word that fails because, again, every, as long as they're trying, that is a good thing. We can't get mad at somebody. But when they make no effort, I brought this up before. So, again, I, I, at some point, we need to really look at, if they know nothing is gonna happen, and I'm generalizing, I'm not picking anybody out, I'm just trying to generalize. At what point do we look at, do we track history? Do we see who's actually doing it? Who's never doing anything, who's failed on, you know, do we pick them? I don't know. I'm just trying to say, at some point, we will have to shift as to contractors that just don't wanna, I don't pick a word, man. If they can justify that they can't do it, that's one thing. But if they can't even do that, then, then it needs to be looked at. So, I'm, this is food for thought, guys. So, we don't even have to talk about it.
No, I completely agree with you. Just a quick, uh, uh, aside on that, y- you have contractors that are flouting it and being like, whatever, very few. Um, but you have, uh, the overwhelmingly majority of contractors that want to do the right thing um, as far as that's concerned. And so, no, I, I do want to track, uh, uh, the chronic, uh, uh, underperformers. Obviously, uh, we want to do that, and we want to be able to send the mid-year, uh, uh, to DCAM with the ones that need to do better so that we establish a track record with the underperforming, uh, contractors so that we can move them off of city projects for chronically underperforming.
All right, I'm gonna just jump in and say that I think it's always gonna be more complicated than the conversation uh, as is described from everybody. Every one of you's comments are right on point, and they're accurate and correct. Um, as far as the invitation, uh, as Tim alluded to, or commented about who we should invite, um, if, uh, if, um, Ann Cadalas was here, who works, uh, trying to recruit people for employment, she tell you that they're struggling. Um, if you can tell me that the offer to get free CDR license filled up all the classes, I don't, wouldn't believe you because they're still struggling to get those fills. If they, if it was the free EMT training that's available with stipend, they are struggling to get that. Tech Foundry can give you computer skills and lead you, walk you into a job. They can't fill up all the seats. Um, there's certain part, and, and I don't say any of this to dissuade anybody or the conversations that we're having. It is always going to be more complicated, but the reality is, is that you can live well enough in our communities now where you don't have to work. And some people have the mentality, they would prefer to just get by with a little bit than to put in the effort and commitment that it takes to have a lot more. And that's something that is not easily, we can't solve that. So, we can go to the schools. There are plans and conversations about how to address um, the cliff for those who are getting support, uh, governmental support, who will get to the edge, and the gap between them giving up their benefits to go into the workforce and that timeframe that it takes. Those are conversations that have been going, going for quite a while. We have the impacts of COVID. The schools are dysfunctional. The trade school that we have is dysfunctional with the lack of a relationship with construction trades that walks these kids into it. I mean, you know, you, we need to start having the types of conversations where the calendar year in which these students are working may not fit into the real world where they're getting out in June and sitting around all summer to be, to, you know, to age out or to be in a position where they can go to work or start learning the trades and stuff. We need to fix the system. And as far as, um, I know what Shay kind of alluded to, I believe the last meeting we had, we, there was, or at least I expected that we were gonna have a conversation about holding some of these companies accountable, but the establishment of the track record requires time. It's not quickly done. And I believe that structure is in place or is starting to be put in place so that they can start to report. But we're not gonna be able to get a report to DCAM immediately. It's gonna take their fail, a, a sub's failure and repeatedly failure before they're listed as somebody who can't bid. Um, there is a lot of advocacy by individuals, and as Tim made reference to it, it came up in the meeting last night. But what I was, the, when I was vomiting in my mouth and trying to swallow it, the same advocacy wasn't, i- it, it was, it's not for the people who were there complaining about their own businesses in the, in the zone that's being talked about. And, you know, and, you know, for my colleagues, this already implied that they're not voting for it because the right people aren't gonna get the jobs, and they're not gonna get the money. Um, if we can't get them, you know, to get on board and recognize that the rising, the boat, the rising tide will raise all the boats regardless of your, uh, ethnicity or race or color, then we're, it's, we don't have enough employees anyway. And when you start hyper focusing who you're going to hire and who you're gonna create opportunities for, it just makes it even more difficult. But there is no entity who cares about employment or raising the social ladder for people who is not struggling to get butts in the chairs to do the work. Now, I don't say any of that to dissuade anybody. We will continue to do the work. Uh, but this conversation is not new. Uh, and so we can invite the schools, we can invite Tech Foundry, anybody else we want. The reality is, there's not enough people who are interested. And if Fiore knows damn well, he ain't getting twenty thousand ironworkers over the next five years because they don't exist. And I try to tell somebody, my, you know, I got six kids, my kids ain't going out in the backyard to pick the vegetables my wife grows. There's no way in hell they're going to work on a farm or somewhere where they needed to do some work. And they can live, and they're content with it. And I don't see how they can do it because packs of cigarettes cost ten dollars and a, a pack, and I can remember one cigarette for twenty cents a pack, and I said, if they went to a quarter, I was quitting. Um, but this is a different world.
We, 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 we have a, um, a sub on both projects right now that's underperforming on the forestry building and on uh, Swan de Berry. Um, the midway report to DCAM on both projects should have them in it. This should start the track record to get them off of projects as the lowest responsible bidder uh, going forward, once we're starting to establish a track record of chronic underperformance.
Who was it again? I missed it. I'm sorry.
But he didn't, he didn't say, is it, I, it may not be appropriate.
I didn't, I didn't mention the name. I just said that we had a sub that's underperforming on both projects.
That they're in the process of doing it, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're doing that, but I'm not happy that we're having to do that. So, the thing is, is that's, that's the only thing I'll say on that. And please, I don't think it's appropriate in this meeting to then, yeah, if it's on the paper, you know, that's fine. We'll, we'll deal with it. Um, next.
You're on mute, Fiore.
Yeah, no, I was just trying, we gotta be cautious of the time. It's already two thirty, and we got a couple of good sized, uh, items still to come up.
I'm, I'm all set. Um, Maureen, next, or Fiore, next item?
Um, let's see, review the bar in corporate versus town Hollister court case?
Fiore, or somebody? That's not me.
Yeah, so, so here's what, you guys had heard me made mention that, um, I had originally had some thoughts about what do we do about contractors that aren't in compliance? And I had, I remembered a, a conversation, I would, our lawyer, the ironworker lawyer that works directly for us, about what do we do about it? And he told me that there was this court case on file. It's been the Superior Court. There is no higher. This could be the grounds for getting rid of or addressing the lack of, um, whatever we want to call it, around the responsible employee ordinance. DCAM, these are, these can be DCAM certified contractors, because you, Frank, you're here. You've heard, I, how many contractors say, I'm stuck with this guy? Well, guess what? This court, so I sent it around to everybody to preview. I don't know if anybody asked anybody in the city, but I, I just want to be clear that now you've got a chance to look at it, and here's what I'll repeat quickly because we don't have to spend a lot of time on it today because we don't have the answer. But maybe if somebody talked to somebody, I'd love to know. So, what it says is that if the city of Springfield, the lawyer thought this is fantastic for me to think out the box. DCAM is a certification process where they review all these contractors, and then they send, here's the good contractors out to a city list. They rate them, and they're supposed to review them and blah, 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 but they've never de, they decertified anybody in like, or maybe one in twenty years. DCAM's a mess. Not sitting here and saying they're great. We got files that say, you got bad apples, and they do nothing about it. So, with that said, if the city of Springfield, and I hope I word this correctly, has a review committee, and I already got the wrong buzzwords, that says, this review committee is only going to look at the REO policy and review documented, so there's three parts to this, documented contractors that have worked on REO. We could say, guess what? We, as the city, have a review board, that's the word. And this review board doesn't even want to take your bid because your prac, past history on the REO jobs is terrible. So, you could actually, you don't even have to accept his bid at that time. But then there's the question of, what about a brand new contractor? Well, you always have to let him bid because he has no history. Then the question is, um, you know, there, what's the third one? Shoot, um, bad contractor, with history, new contractor, no history, I don't know. There's probably one more scenario where, or do we say, as of today, here's the new cutoff line, any job going forward? I mean, that might take three years before we come up with the bad history, and we gotta define what a bad history is. You know, in other words, you don't, you're not just applying this today. You could, if lawyers are smart enough to say, you know what? There is history. This has been a law for twenty years. So, I, that's the gist of it, guys, but i- i- the, my lawyer is one hundred percent adamant that this court case allows us to, if we have a review board to review only the REO, I want to be clear, they're not acting as DCAM. They're acting as the REO compliance review board based on the law in the city of Springfield around the REO requirement that they have, contractors are supposed to meet it. Now, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. These are DCAM certified contractors because the other ones fall under Frank's privy because Frank's in a room, and, and he is going GC in the room. So, I'm only not attacking Frank in any way, shape, or form. He's responsible for, Frank, what do you think? Sixty percent of the rest of the subs are under your control, forty under DCAM, if I were to guess? That sounds statistically correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, again, I'm just, I, I've been constructing long enough that I, you're, I'm spitting numbers out. I'm, I'm close. So, again, it's, and he'll tell you, sitting right there, it's, they're stuck with them, and I can't tell you how many GCs have said this. There's nothing we can do. Well, I truly believe that this is the tool that we can use forward. I'm a lawyer, but you could also get twenty lawyers that will give you twenty different opinions. So, uh, again, anybody's free to talk to my lawyer, but again, did anybody get a chance to talk to anybody, any lawyer in the city? Anybody running up the flagpole, if they're gonna be interested? I, we don't have to, we don't have to solve it today. You all got it. You asked for it. We had a quick talk about it when I sat in that parking lot two months ago. Here it is. You all got it. So, just throwing it out there. Frank, did you see it? You want to copy this?
I did. I, I got it. I, I saw it. Yep.
You know, I just, I don't know if you guys looked it over and said, damn, he might be out to something. We're stuck with these bad apples.
Read it. Yeah, that was, that's, that's not the best contractor. I don't want to name names there, but, um, I, I read it, and it sounded like they went back and did their research, and every job that they listed, they, they had bad reviews on, and that's, that's ultimately why that they were able to discard them from the, you know, the, the, the bid.
You're on, you're on mute, Fiore.
City had a special review board, and because they had it, that's what allowed them to get the contractor thrown off. It wasn't DCAM. There is no throw off. There, there really isn't anybody. I'm telling you, one maybe, twenty, Frank. You would know anybody decertified. I never have. And you know there's bad apples that get bad reviews, but yet they go to DCAM, still out there doing work.
They have to be really bad because most of the time, you have to have a bid bond, a performance and payment bond when you bid the job. And that means that if you fail, the bonding company will come in, so, and, and finish the job for the, the owner. So, the fact that they actually had the bid bond, but threw them out anyways, tells me that they were just bad, that the town could see that there was a problem.
My only question will be, what, what would the threshold be? Um, because in the, uh, in the case study, it basically says they hired an investigator to do an investigation on the company. Um, that, that's resources, and then the company just had a horrible track record, right? Like, out of, like, eighteen cases, they found seven or eight uh, uh, towns that said, you know, um, so- Uh, uh, towns that said, you know, um, so is it two or three towns? Is it one or two other projects? Is it eight other projects? Um.
Can I jump in?
Like, so, so I, I, I think, I think it's a great case. I'm just, just trying to figure out the threshold on. What triggers, right?
So this is real easy because again, we're looking at this case as presented. I'm only looking at the fact of how they were able to throw the guy off. That's the conception.
That makes sense.
We want. So the only thing we have to look at as the city of Springfield, we're only pulling one component into play. So yeah, it's going to take somebody to review his track record related to only the REO. We don't care what he did. That's D cam's problem. We want to say you did not comply to REO and X, Y, Z. CFK, MYZ, and with that history, again, I'm not, we can create a history, but it's only around the REO. The review board looks at the history, they make a decision to accept or, well, let's use the word. Decertify that guy from, that would be the word applied. Decertify that guy from bidding the Springfield project. Six months, I don't have any of that information. I don't know what happens there. But you gotta give somebody a chance to correct their action six months down the road a year. But we don't have, we don't care what they did anywhere else. We don't care what they did, how they screwed anybody else but us. What's your REO? What did you do? And you know what? You sucked. We're getting ready. That's, that's, I mean, I'm using layman's term, but that's the, that's the gist of it right there.
I, I think it's a good frame of reference. I really do.
I, no comment, I guess. I, I, my first thought would be that, you know, what is, uh, who would do the investigations? Who would they, you know?
That, that would be my only questions.
Do the investigation first and secondly, um. Uh, law department, getting the law department to. Be willing.
This, is the city on board? Would the law part want to look into it? Yeah, somebody's gonna, somebody's gotta do something about it. Cause or we can just, you know, again, i- i- it has to be moved the flagpole at some point, you know?
Well, the thing is, when you start talking about the city taking on decertifying, but D cam having to certify them. I can see them standing before a judge and saying, so by what authority does the city think that they're more, have greater authority? To decertify and of course, you know, yeah, but you know, that's. And the thing is, is, is it Massachusetts or is it that from another state? If it's not Mass. It is Massachusetts.
The highest court case in Massachusetts, and that's why we get to use it. So again, that's based on just the principle itself that they reviewed. They had a personal review board and they made the decision as the board, you can still use D cam. But they, they took it even step further to have a personal review board is the way I interpret this. So again, it's going to make having a board, look at the documents and then make a decision. But yeah, I get it. We don't want to be sued. I don't want to be sued, blah, blah, blah.
Well, well, I'm used to it. Tim is, I too, as well, I believe. We just want to be, but we don't want to kick the sleeping dog either.
So we talk, we talk about two different things. We're, we're talking about in the suit, businesses versus. Workers or we talk?
Well, the thing is, is generally, when, when we first started the REO, um, we had to start, we had to backtrack it right out the box. Because of the Fall River lawsuit regarding the REO. And enforcement and it, and in that case, it wasn't even about enforcement. It was just the language was enough to where they lost the lawsuit. Pay damages based on language, not enforcement. So, I mean, um, but.
Usually it's different in terms of when you devour somebody to, as a contractor. Or devour somebody, uh, because they didn't hire enough. Uh, workers, uh, whatever category you have. So, uh, that is something that the legal will definitely have to look at.
Right, well, that's, you know, unfortunately that we don't have a lawyer here to represent the city. And even if, I mean, you know, I, I think those are, even when I'm getting opinions from the law, I always kind, you know, I always prep, you know, balance it against. Um, who pays them? Because you know, how passionately they are to go to defend us depends on who's paying them. Go ahead.
Melvin, the, the quickest thing, you know, in reference to what Eli just said is, look, there, there's going to be, have to be a decision made as to. What constitutes a real effort? Because again, the guy could say, I made an effort and this is what he can present to us. So yeah, there is an added layer of. You know, it's not as caught and dry as you didn't perform. If he made the attempt to perform but still failed. That plays into a, into credibility of his, I tried and through no fault of my own. I, I didn't succeed. I agree, but I tried. So yeah, there, it's not caught and dry, guys. I want to be clear about that. So that's what I said, this isn't as simple as it sounds. The, there's going to be some work that has to be put in it and, and we're not going to do it today.
But I think that's where the investigator comes in. I think, I don't know, obviously, but I think that piece is huge for the investigator. To establish a track record of underperforming through a series of towns.
Okay, no, because no other city or town has an REO. This is only related to the REO. It has nothing, again, it has nothing to do with their, their putting the stairs the wrong spot. The, uh, failure to, 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 you know, meet the deadline or, or overbill. There's a million things that Frank can say what, what, what constitutes a bad apple. This only relates to, that's why I said we, we can, you know, we have to think of it just the REO. Did you meet the, what the REO? Big thing we made up five years ago and passed. Did they meet that based on it? Technically, it's just Frank. So technically is the general contractor. He's the only one on the left. But now you have to whittle it down to the, the, the subs because Frank's stuck with them. So you have to be able to show that Frank screwed because this guy has never hired a woman, never hired a resident. Or, or his, he put an ad in and he, and, and it was so fictitious that it was bogus. So you can say it didn't add. I told you about the ironworker. I didn't even have an ironworker out of eighty guys that met the guy's criteria and the job was good for three weeks. I'm like, I can't even meet that. So don't tell me, you can't accept this as a reality of a real ad. Because it was a fabrication to knowing he would never meet it. He played the game. So again, I'm not saying everybody plays a game. Frank does realize and sees there are contractors who really try. I love the fact that they're all, most of them are trying. They're not going to succeed, succeed every time. So we can't just say because that guy sucked on two jobs, if he tried and truly tried. We go to debauch him as just the REO requirement. So Frank doesn't have to get stuck with him only on the REO. We're screwed because we didn't do our due diligence enough to say you really sucked and this is why you're here. There's some, remember to, I, I'm not going to mention there's like a brick guy that right into our face and I'm never going to do anything. It's not you can do to me. And we never did and we never could, but that particular brick guy going way back, like eight years, Melvin, remember? We, every job he just didn't carry. He flat out said it. You can't do nothing to me. So again, that's the apple. We want to definitely get rid of right off the bat. The other ones aren't as caught and dry. It's going to be some gray areas of what is a true. Effort to try and, and there's got to be a real definition. We came up with one, but are we the people to decide the real definition? Lawyers may want to do that. That's all. So anyway. Want to move on? You want, we could talk about this. I think we're all clear as what's going on. So it's up to you guys.
Let, let, let's move on. We got like fifteen minutes left.
Next item.
All right, discussion of the Forest Park Forestry Building.
Okay, so, um, Maroy Construction. Has only done, uh, uh, horizontal construction for the city of Springfield before. Never took on a, uh, three million dollar project, uh, never took on an REO project. Uh, that being said, they're not doing well. Um, one, their project manager. Is handling the project on both fronts. He's dealing with all the paperwork and he's doing all the building. Um, they don't have an EO person. They don't have an HR person. They don't even have an analyst. Um, he's not versed in the paperwork, so he's just behind all the time. Not, I'm not going to say it's not his fault. I'm just saying that the owner. Uh, bid the job without having the understanding of all the work that the project manager was going to do on his own. Um, so they have no in, uh, a house person. We have a litany of projects for the REO for ARPA. ARPA is a beast right now, so. I don't have time to hold his hand, um, but we've been doing, uh, incrementally better. He's going to get his reports in, uh, for the project in the next few days. I talked to the owner, the owner intimated that he will not bid another REO project, um, until, well, he didn't say until things. Were, uh, turned around in the shop or anything like that. He just said he wouldn't, uh, he wasn't going to build, bid an REO project in the near future. Uh, because of the, uh, paperwork. Um, so they're behind, uh, uh, they know it. They're doing the best they can. They're being amenable, um, trying to help him with the subs. I've met with the subs twice with him. Shooting out a letter to them, um, in the next couple of days. But again, doing the best I can to help them, uh, move along. Um, but they're understaffed, undermanned, uh, as far as the REO side is concerned. Um, and, uh, hopefully they're forty-eight percent done. And hopefully on the back end of the project, we can help them do a lot better.
Um. Next item?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. Discuss what corrective actions should be taken for contractors that are not meeting numbers. And if the committee will be putting them on notice for failure to meet REO requirements.
Um, Maureen, back up one please, because it, there is the number, item number four. But before we quickly get off that, I want to reiterate that. The board made a request to have whenever those documents or any documents come in, that they immediately get set out. Because again, we've got contractors that are working there that might already be finished. We need to really see the numbers. Uh, you know, a- again.
I, I get it. I'm trying to get documents right now. I don't even have certified payroll that I need to get from.
Do that. So the, I mean, that's a state issue. This guy could be, you know.
On many levels, they, they, they're behind.
I got it. So, item number four, I might as well just jump on it because I'm the one to put it on there. Um, I did ask, ask, and I did ask to have Maroy's construction brought into the next meeting. The problem is, um, I guess I didn't communicate it well enough. This is the next meeting. But we're going to talk about bringing them in a month from now. So, boy, it's no big deal. We're just going to bring them in next month. Was to bring them in today and say, hey buddy, we're, you know, what, what? You know, we, we need to really find out. Okay, I got it. You, you were pretty clear as to what he said. But the problem is, we're still looking at, I, I, I don't, when did they start three month timeframe? So you've had three months to hire somebody. You've had, you know, if they're on a shoestring budget, then shame on them. It's not our problem as the city. We have a law that you're supposed to buy by. You took the job knowing it. If you didn't know what was going on, then get up the speed as quick as you can to hire people. Sorry that we cost you money, but. You need to comply. So again, that's what I'm sure other people would have chimed in on numerous different things. Uh, so again, we'll just, is everybody in agreement that, that this guy should be in front of us next month? Uh, whatever, whatever term you want to put after that. You know, I get it. That could be said, you know?
That's up to the committee. Um, I'm, I'm honestly, I think you're not going to hear anything else from him that you haven't heard from me. But, um, that, that's completely up to you guys to bring them in, definitely.
Right. So then the next conversation is, I mean, we brought in Big Y and said, you need to do better, but we never had them brought back in. So then we really should start thinking because if fifty percent of the job is left, it's not a big bill. This is not going to be a lot of hours left. What is the percentage of hours to date and what's the percentage left? And if he's not even going to come close, then we got to start a real conversation of, you know, uh, we had one contract that didn't meet. So, you know, again, no big deal. Uh, it was the close enough and it wasn't a really bad number. But if these numbers are, we don't even know what any numbers are. Big Y failed and again, we can't, we can't show a history of allowing it to go on and then we don't do anything about it. And I'm not saying we're going to do anything about it. I'm just saying, we have to do our due diligence based on what we were tasked to do as a committee. And so we should be doing that. And then somebody else's job, define them or whatever they want to do. That's not mine. But as a committee member, I want this guy in front of me to say, you took a job. So what are you planning on? How are you fixing this? Because not even hiring somebody to do paperwork, three months later, shame on you. And, you know, that's, that's, we should be able to have that said to that guy's face because they took the job knowing it was in there. You know, we always said that. They know what they're getting into. That's what the pre-meeting is board. And I don't know if we had a pre-meeting, not saying we had one. This is, maybe this size job doesn't justify one. But he, you know, all subs used to get pre-job meetings, right? I don't, I don't, I'm not saying they didn't have one. I'm.
Oh, yeah, no, they, we had a, we had a pre-con meeting. We definitely had a pre-con meeting. We have pre-con meetings with all the projects.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, like you said, I don't think, uh, a lot of them dig into all of the contract. Again, shame on them as far as that's concerned. You're completely right. Uh, but. They clearly did not have a clue on what type of lift the REO would be. Um, and then again, it's not making any excuses for them. It's just what, what, just what happened. So.
Uh, do you guys want to form a motion to bring them in? Is that what we need to do? We want to just have a, I, I mean, I'm, I'm making a motion. I, I asked to be, be brought in front of us. I didn't know if I had, if that could be added. Hey, send them a letter. I'm not the committee chair. I, that was my request. Uh, so I'm throwing it out there. Anybody else want to do anything about it? Because I just don't think we should allow this guy to just. Come at the end of the job and then he's in front of us saying, why did you fail here? And again, what do you, we need to know corrective action. So what's his corrective action? To correct the contractors he hired. So he had that tell contractor was in there. The contractor decided to read it. If his contractors aren't in any compliance at all, then shame on him for hiring those contractors. He, you heard Frank just say it. Because this is such a smaller job, he's probably got a little bit, even higher statistical number. Of what he controls as a general contractor, because I think if the bid's under twenty-five, I don't spin it now. It's like twenty-five grand. He gets to make that decision who he brings in on a, on a small bid package. Doesn't even fall under a bid package, you know? So just again, I'm not one hundred percent statistical bad already on every bid law out there, but. This guy, you know, again, what's his corrective action? And that's why I want him brought in. I want to know, what does he plan to do to make these number thirty-five, twenty-five, uh, twenty-eight and eight or, you know, seven point nine, seven point nine or. Uh, that's all. Anybody in agreement? Anybody in disagreement?
Actually, I guess. I'm sorry, I just didn't. Are we talking about Big Y or somebody else?
No, we're talking about this, this Forest Park Forestry Building, the Maroy Construction. That has not a single stitch of paperwork into date and doesn't sound like he's getting it anytime soon.
Well, well, he, he, okay, so they've been sending in paperwork, but all the paperwork hasn't been correct. So I've been working with them as far as getting their paperwork up to speed. So they've been trying. He's been trying, but they, they, they're just not doing well, uh, as far as that's concerned. Yes.
So, so the basic question that Fiori is asking is when somebody's not meeting the, what, what we're expecting of them. Do we call them in at the end or do we call them in along the way? And I think we got to get better at calling them in along the way. But Jay, I defer to you if you think they're trying, but you know, it doesn't.
Oh, you can definitely call them. I, I just, I'm, I'm not going to say it's unique, but I just think. Uh, them just completely admit, hey, we weren't, uh, uh, prepared for this, um, have nobody for it. I'm not going to bid the job again until, what, they didn't say until we can. Um, so I'm, I'm just saying that, uh, uh, it's not the same type of situation as. Somebody who has the capability, uh, to do it and then are just completely messing up. They lack the capability, uh, if they, like Fiori said, if they needed to hire or should, uh, get on board. With another person to do their REO, uh, reporting completely, uh, understandable and they should do that. Um, the position they're in, they just haven't, um, as far as that's concerned. So. Um, bring them in, don't bring them in. I'm just saying you're going to hear the same, uh, stuff that I'm telling you right now.
So quick comment on that. Do we show the guy that in this contract that he signed with the city? And again, I'm, as a board member, there is sanctioning that then. Is he aware of that? If somebody said, hey, you do know.
Oh, yeah. I, I, I went over that.
I'm not saying you didn't.
And the subs, like I said, I called this sub. All right, all right, good.
Yeah, uh, like I said, yeah, it's just to me, I, I, we've said it before. GCs need to be brought in to, to be able to see our dissatisfaction. The way their project going in. Again, I want to be clear. I, I'm fair to everybody. If they're trying, that's fine. We'd be understanding. But the question needs to be, what didn't you understand? And then how do we learn as we move forward? It's always a learning thing, everything you try to do. It's just not slap the guy on the wrist. It's not fine. Um, you know, we, but again, I mean, I'd like to tell the guy, so if you knew this was going on, why didn't you hire somebody? Uh, you know, again, uh, uh, that's the first thing I want to know. Why did not, why did you not hire somebody? Uh, you know, again, uh, uh, that's the first thing I wanna know, why did not, why did you not hire somebody? If that's what the case needed to be, you know, if that's the only reason he's behind, y- in the end, it sounds like it is.
Well, I'm, I'm indifferent as to whether we bring them in or not, I'm okay with it. Um, the inability of us to have a meeting um and get quorum suggests that we may be able to get them in and have quorum to actually do the business. Uh, but I also will question, uh, it, wh- what would be the outcome, expected outcome when we just bring this in? Is this for our own ego? Will this make us feel more empowered? Because he's not going to, his numbers and his outcomes aren't gonna change if we bring them in, but at the same time. So I get the idea, we should be calling these guys in, and we should be calling them along the way, so I agree with that. But this is not an O'Connell, this is not an Aquadro, this is not a Fontaine, this is a small guy that's not according to Jay, not coming back, so are, are we talking to the wall? And, or, you know, is it gonna have any impact in, but, and is any other contractor gonna know that we brought them in, and if that's the purpose, then that's fine, cuz it doesn't matter to me, I'm okay, I, I block out the time, I'll be there for the meeting. And you can berate him, and he'll never come back, or he won't do another contract, cuz he now knows that it's for real and it's joke. Um, but, uh, at, at the same time, I don't wanna waste people's time either, so.
Well, the first thing relates to what Jay brought up, and we've mentioned a hundred times. This is and does reflect his D-CAM certification, because we get to say, we had a law in place. Again, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what the city wants to do, I'm just giving you, my perspective is, cuz you said, what can be done? Right, what, what will help other contractors doing this? I guess maybe when we start telling them that the smaller contracts coming in, look at, we gave the guy a bad, the last, know what you're getting into. You know, that verbiage, so if we do nothing, it sends a message. If we at least do our due diligence as a city, it puts people on notice. I got it, they still might not care, but my only point is, but at the end of the day, you get to turn this guy into D-CAM and say, he did not comply to our REO. He gets a bad mark there, what's it gonna do on future bidding? Again, maybe, you know, again, I got it, I, I'm, I'm just, again, there is multiple reasons why we need to at least bring them in.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I just, I'm just gonna preference this. If he's a small contractor and he's struggling to this high degree, then this is what I'm saying respectfully, we all need to make sure that we are available for the next scheduled meeting when we invite him. We need to make sure that we RSVP to Maureen, so she knows that we're gonna get it. We make sure that we get the link ahead of time, so we don't look dysfunctional and we're not wasting somebody's time. So if we're gonna do this, then we need to do it, because we need, just like we're trying to hold him accountable. The last thing I wanna do is, is to have somebody plan on coming, set their schedule, don't have, as Jay already said, they don't have the staff, they didn't hire, they're not big enough to have hired somebody to do compliance, that's being paid to be at a meeting. I mean, that's, I, I don't go to C-three meetings, because most of the people at the C-three meetings are being paid by some agency to be at the meeting, they're not the people who live in the neighborhood, but then, you know, so it's what the hell, you know, okay, if you wanna send a salvation, army pays staff, the shared department pays the staff to be there, then what the hell you need me for? Um, but that's the only thing I'm gonna ask is, is that we can, we will do that, we were gonna call, we're gonna call them in. But and this is for the committee members, let's make sure that we're available, and we show up and we're on time. And we do it professional, put them at the beginning of the agenda, so we can do everything else later, so we can get them on and get them off. Cuz I have much respect for people who work.
No, but I see Lisa's hand up, they would know this information more than me. So the statement was, he's only done horizontal work, I don't know the GC, I don't follow him. So he has statistically done a ton of work at UMass. I don't know what he's done there, but I know he's done work at UMass, I'm not saying they're big projects. Uh, but if he's done horizontal work up there, then, you know, again, we only know what we are being told. Uh, Lisa, do you follow this particular contractor? And again, I mean, I know we're running out of time, the next thing is all about sending a letter for failure to meet. Do, you know, and again, so that would be, here's a contractor failing, do we at least put them on notice? We talked about putting Big Y on notice, I thought we did agree to that. So again, I'm, I'm not trying to jump ahead, uh, Lisa, do you, can I ask Lisa a quick question?
I was gonna get to her, I just hadn't got there, but the thing is, 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 yes, if, well, I guess, we don't need to keep rolling over it. Why don't we send a letter, which isn't, the, I, I didn't want you to drop in there, send them the letter, ask for them to come. And I'm in favor of them coming. I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna come, you know, we don't, we look like we, you know, we're a professional, and we're doing, we need to. This group that's here today has watched, and over the years, we've watched and we are looking in the mirror of our own dysfunction. So when we invite somebody else to come in and see how dysfunctional we are, that's the only thing I'm saying.
Okay, quick question, does, what does the letter say? I, I'm not familiar with the, the, does it give them instructions to bring documents or whatever?
Fiori, you wanna jump in there, or Jay, or?
That's what I said, I don't think we actually came up with an official letter yet, I don't, we've not, we've only asked a couple. We asked Big Y to come in front of us. Um, I don't, I've never seen a letter that went out from the city, so we asked, um, I think four contractors, if I were to guess, have come in front of us as a board in the ten, fifteen years I've been on it, maybe more. But there's somebody got a letter, maybe Tom Moore, uh, I couldn't even to Theo. I don't know who's got it, I even never seen it, but we said, come in front of the board for a review.
I can check with the other lawyers who have been on the REO committee. Um, I'm interested to see what Lisa had to say as well.
Lisa, please. You're muted if you're speaking. I can't say that if you are muted, I just, you know.
You're on mute, Lisa.
Yeah, you are muted.
Okay, I, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know about UMass, uh Fiori, they've only done uh horizontal construction for the city, and their projects have been around a million dollars. So this is their first three million dollar project, this is the first time they've done an REO project of uh any magnitude for the city.
Okay, like I said, I agree with you, we don't know anything more than they can tell us. I do know he's somebody, when I said who it was, oh yeah, that guy works up a ton of work up at UMass. Did I ever clarify it? Cuz at this point, it's beyond my pay scale, I don't, it doesn't affect me, it affects Lisa, cuz they track general contractors.
May I suggest, hey, just sent out a letter, you know, saying that we have concerns, something to the effect that we have concerns, like to have a conversation about it, doesn't have to sound punitive or uh, 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 or anything, just but, once they get here, you know, then we can release the hounds kinda thing, or whatever we need to do, and, and hopefully it'd be more informative than antagonistic anyway. Um, but does that, would that satisfy or put us in a good position? Uh, committee members, voting members, uh, we in agreement, we're gonna ask them and let it be sent?
We can ask what the official letter went out, if nobody can't find it, when we just make one up, like you said, I'm not looking to to slap the guy in the wrist right off the bat, looking for an inquiry and the option to ask him what really happened here, and then why, cuz again, we, we're asking all these subs, cuz, you know, through Frank, the Frank to get on him and say, what did you do wrong? Well, who is in charge of that GC? It's us as a committee, that's, I mean, you know, ultimately, we are the, in, you know, Jay's job is to, or somebody in the city's gotta, there is a third, second compliance guy in the city, that's the guy that enforces city contracts, that's the actual paper one. Jay's job is the detail, and I'm not telling him what his job is, I'm just, my interpretation what his job is, is to enforce the details of that contract. But again, the other compliance guy enforces the contract. So again, I just look at it as, we're, we're supposed to enforce the REO, and that's what our privy falls under as the committee, so, not enforce it, that might be a bad word. Point out your, pick a word, now, sometimes they just get really stuck on the words, you know?
I just wanted to jump in and add, Marroy does a lot of public work in different communities in the area, and I think you know, if they're not meeting the terms of it, it is useful to have it be on record that they have been sent a letter that they're not meeting the terms um of, of this agreement. They might say now that they don't plan to bid again, but they might well bid again in two years.
So, uh, Melvin?
Yes.
Uh, along the way, we had talked about drafting a letter for Big Y, which I offered to do. I don't have all the information accurate, but I did draft a letter, which you know, it's took me ten or fifteen minutes, I'm happy to send it to some people here, or and then it, it would at least be a base for the Big Y letter, or this other letter to this, to the, the, the contractor on the uh uh, at Forest Park.
Tim, would it be inappropriate for us, if, if you wouldn't mind, could you send the draft of it to the committee? And that way, they could, um, you know, get an idea of what it says and offer any sugge- edits.
Yeah, it, it, it definitely needs edits, I'm not sure I have all my facts right, but it's at least something to start with, so I'll send it out.
All right, thank you. And, uh, and Lisa, appreciate your suggestion, and, and yes, we will call them, and we'll draft, we'll send a letter out as soon as possible. Next item?
Um, well, it's back to discuss the corrective action that should be taken to the contractors that don't meet the numbers. And if they were put on notice for failure, kind of.
I think we kinda talked through a lot of that.
Keep that on as the next agenda item, and that could be the first thing on to really divulge ten minutes, why don't we all think about, what are we really looking for in this letter? Uh, again, because the, the contractors don't fall under our privy, we're, we're looking at the main GC. So, again, I, we wanna be careful with this, and I'm not a lawyer, because we, we have to be careful what we say in it. Because ultimately, again, this is the gray area, man, what effort did they make? And if they made an effort, what says, we can't say, you sucked and you didn't meet it, well, no dude, I made an effort, so now you just slandered me, does that make sense the way I'm putting this? You know, it's not as caught and dry as send a letter saying, you know, I guess I could just say, look, you underperformed on the job, we're gonna hope you do better. Ultimately, if you're gonna continue to bid city or REO projects, uh, you know, that, that to me is somewhat neutral, does that make sense? So that's just it, I don't think we can just.
When we see the draft, and that's the, the, the comments, it suggested edits would include things like that. And that's why I wanna see it sent around, that way we can get, we can also get Chase uh thoughts on it as well.
The other part of that is, they're still not fifty percent way through the project, right? So they could actually end up meeting the goals, or, or maybe not, so let's not get ahead of ourselves as far as the project being over and labeling them, you know, because no, they're not doing well, and they weren't nowhere near prepared for this. Um, yet and still, it's still forty-eight percent through the project.
With that, about two different letters, one could be a halfway through project, or whatever we deem necessary to the GC. But I think what this originally came up with is the subs that are underperforming or didn't perform, and I think that's, we're working closely with a gentleman like Frank to say what real effort did they make, because he's got the hands on, he's the one that, that's on the job site pushing the guy every day and seeing what's being done. Uh, Jay, you step in and have your meeting with Frank and then the contractor, but again, ultimately, I think it's a combination of you guys. Um, but again, it, it still comes down to that, um, you know, what effort was being made, and if none, then we, we, it's an easy letter. But again, I, eh, 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 the letter, there's two letters, one to a GC, and one to the underperforming subs. But again, that's a little bit more complicated.
And, and, and just for.
Once the job is done, that's the one that would go out.
For clarification, um, the subs receive letters throughout the whole project. Um, so there's a litany of letters that go out to the sub, a, a sub that's underperforming can receive a letter on a monthly basis. So, the subs have plenty of letters um in their files as far as their performance throughout the whole project, not one, not two. Um, it could be a, a few of them, uh.
I didn't know that.
Uh, yeah, oh yeah, oh definitely, yes.
Okay, cool.
Emails, meetings.
Hmm, yeah. And, and formal letters, definitely, yes.
Right, so eventually, the question then is, what's the, so again, I, this was brought up in previous meetings, we never had time to really resolve it, we don't have the time today. Food for thought, what is the, what corrective actions do they send it in? Is that something that we should see for a bad apple? And again, I'm, I can't give you an example of that apple today.
We, we send them a maximum effort form, which is basically, how are you gonna correct your action?
Yeah, exactly.
And, and, and they send that back, and we work with them along uh those lines, whether it's putting it out to uh mass hire, or community works, um, whatever the case may be. Uh, we work with them, we've even worked with, um, uh, and, and Frank was very intimate with this as well, with getting a person on the job and then getting them math skills as far as uh the job is concerned, so even a deeper dive than just trying to get people on the job, but trying to get them work ready while they're on the job, you know, so, no, there's plenty of track, my intimitation was that we establish chronic underperformers. Um, and then that would be, uh, I think, a much more stronger way to be able to uh make our case. And that's just my, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, like, like I said, I just wanna make sure we run it by a lawyer, for the end of the day. At, what, I think the key thing, and I brought it up five or six times, what is an effort being made? What constitutes an effort? Cuz at the end of the day, if he's making an effort, we can rep him in them all he's want. Hey, I tried, man, and I truly tried, that's the worst, he adds that word in there, I tried, or I really tried. Here's the evidence to show they did, and it's substantial, and we try to do anything against them, then his, then it, it subjects us to a slander, I'm not a lawyer, but that would be the first one jumping to my, to my, uh, you know, cuz we're affecting his his income at that point, is being able to work on contract, uh, on jobs. So again, I, I'm all set, thanks.
Next item?
And that's it.
That's it.
That's it, public speak out.
Um, I think the public's kinda engaged as long with it, and we've been.
Yeah, I gotta get going too.
Well, this is what I'm gonna simply say, is, is I appreciate everybody, I'm gonna ask that everybody stay safe, and uh we look forward to having another meeting. I'm not gonna try to lock down a time right at this moment. I'd like to see what the draft looks like, and then, uh, we'll try to put together an ideal to when everybody might be available so that we can have a meeting. I think vacation season's ending, but we'll look to toward having something probably around this time uh, to, to the middle or the second half of September. Um, so about three weeks to four weeks out, uh, we'll start probably planning for three weeks out. And then hopefully get one done within a few days of that timeframe. Uh, if there's no objections, um, once again, I appreciate everybody's time. And, uh, and feel free to communicate among yourselves. Um, I think long as we're not voting and we're not establishing quarms, we're not violating any open meeting laws. But thank you very much, thank you folks from Springfield, thank you, Maureen, and to all of you who have attended this meeting. Appreciate you guys helping me believe this meeting smarter than I started, and, uh, to, well, to all be well.
See you guys, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.